All right, it's 8:45 PM. And I apologize for the delay in starting. We had a few technical issues that we had to work through as we moved to virtual format. So we will call the meeting to order at this time and invite everyone to please rise and recite the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Kathy, would you call the roll, please?
Jim Dambach?
Here.
Steve Nelson?
Here.
James Shiloh? Eileen Davy?
Here.
Michael DeVito?
Here.
Eric Jones?
Present.
Kristen Wren?
Here.
Quamms present.
Thank you. There are a few, at least one change to the agenda. We'll have to take item number three, Spartan Awards. We'll have to take that off the agenda for this evening, and we'll reschedule that for another meeting. Are there any other changes to the agenda as proposed? Okay, hearing none. Is there a motion to adopt the agenda as proposed? As amended, I guess I should say?
So moved. Chris, run.
Second, Eric Jones.
Okay, moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, stand sign. Motion carries. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
So moved, run.
Is there a second?
Second, Michael.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Roll call.
Nelson?
Yes.
Wren?
Yes.
Shiloh?
Yeah.
Davy?
Yes.
DeVito?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Dambach?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next item is audience to visitors then. And due to the virtual format, we'll take comments by email or electronic format. So please feel free to send those in. Next item then is communications, correspondence, and informational items. Letters and newsletters. There were items from Luda and from the Illinois School Board Association. FOIA requests. There were two FOIA requests, both of which were responded to. Committee reports. Anyone have any committee reports for this evening's meeting? Anyone have a report?
Go ahead, try again. I have a report, Jim. Can you hear me okay?
No, I can, yep.
Awesome. Community Advisory Committee, Matt, Monday, January 31st. This is a committee that's made up of parents ranging with students in the district. They have a wide range of parents that meet with both Mr. Wilder and myself. They represent pretty much every, at the high school level, middle school level, as well as elementary level. Some of the topics that we went over in this meeting, Mr. Wilder went over some of the COVID data and just kind of that things have started to decrease and kind of get back to some type of normalcy after Christmas break where there was a big spike, which should be no surprise to anybody because we're kind of seeing that at the national levels and the local level as well. In addition to that, I talked about shield testing, just kind of give a brief update and feedback, answer questions, things like that. At the time of the meeting, it was live at both high school and the middle school. And it just kind of talked about the rollout at the elementary school level as well. He also provided us just an update for the idea committee as well. So just kind of gave a thorough update on, you know, what has gone on in the committee, what everything is about. And again, question and answers as well. And then we leave time at the end for just a roundtable discussion. So any topics that need to get brought up or whatever. There wasn't all that much at the very end. But it was an hour long. I thought a lot of the questions that we went over, I felt that everything went pretty well. And we meet quarterly. So the next meeting, I think, is set for March.
Oops, I said I was muted there. Thanks, James. Next item, are there any other committee reports? Next item then is Assistant Superintendent for Business Services Report, solar panel discussion.
Thanks, Jim. Mr. Ekstrom and myself have been working with the company out of California for the last four or five months, Forefront Power, and looking into the possibility of having some energy savings with the installation of solar panels. And so back in October, we walked each of the roofs with Forefront. And so tonight, we'd like to invite Anna from Forefront to give the results of those walkthroughs. So I'm going to turn it over to you, Anna.
Thank you, Nicole. And can everybody hear me?
Yes.
And see me? Perfect.
Now I can see you.
Okay, great. Well, good evening, everyone. And thank you, Nicole, for inviting us here tonight to present our proposal. As Nicole said, my name is Ana Diaz Busker. I am a Senior Associate with Forefront Power, and I am here with my colleague, Brian Taylor, our National Director for Public Sector. So our plan tonight is to introduce Forefront Power and our presence in Illinois, go over solar proposal in the context of the current incentives, and then, of course, answer any questions that you may have after we're finished with the presentation and talk about next steps. If that works, I will go ahead and start. At Forefront Power, we have a suite of solutions that can position Sycamore to become a sustainability leader across all school districts in Illinois. What we'll present to you is that through an onsite solar partnership with us, we can save you money on your energy expenses. We take care of all the O and M from the system. We can bring solar into the classroom through renewable energy curriculum, and we can get ahead of any sustainability goals that may be coming down the pike. So who is Forefront Power? We are a best-in-class development group. We have more than 1 gigawatt of projects deployed nationally. Half of these projects built with public entities such as yours. In Illinois, we're one of the top three developers to distribute its solar. We secured 26 megawatts of projects in the last round of the highly coveted Adjustable Block Program incentive. And our early mover customers such as Huntley and Mooseheart are now enjoying savings from their operational projects. In the industry as a whole, we are a solar project finance leader. We have the experience to execute your projects, and we also have a solid financial backing thanks to our A-rated partner, Mitsui. So why does Mitsui matter? Mitsui, as an A-rated energy and infrastructure giant, gives us access to a huge balance sheet that ensures that once a contract is signed, we can start pumping energy and money into that project. It also means that we are the long-term project owner of the system. And then to quickly go back to Illinois, some of our greatest hits include Mooseheart, again, a 2.8-megawatt ground mount system installed and currently operational, and Huntley, which is a 5.5-megawatt ground mount, again, near you. Now, you may be asking, how does Forefront Power partner with the district? That is through a power purchase agreement. Under a power purchase agreement, there is no capital outlay, no upfront cost. So you can save your money for other capital needs across your district, which I'm sure there are many. We finance the system. We build it, we own it, and we operate it. What you do is you buy the energy produced by the system at a rate that is lower than what you're currently paying your utility. So if you quickly look to the graph on the right, before solar, you have one utility bill represented in gray. After solar, you have a reduced utility bill still represented in gray and a solar bill represented in blue. And together, those two bills are going to be less than your previous utility bill. So because our rate is flat for 25 years, whereas your utility rates escalate over time, we're able to provide you savings. Another interesting data point about a PPA is that it allows us to take the 26% federal investment tax credit for solar. As a public agency, you are tax exempt. So if you were to buy and own these systems yourselves, you would be leaving that tax credit on the table. With Forefront Power, we're able to monetize this tax credit and the depreciation benefits of owning the asset, and we pass it along to you in the form of a lower energy rate. So a PPA is an aligned partnership. I mean, you want to see the system produce clean, reliable energy. We want it to see produce clean, reliable energy because that is how we ensure we make back our investment in the district. To that end, we provide all operations and maintenance for the system. This is not going to be another asset for your staff to maintain. So if an inverter or panel breaks, we come out there and fix it. Otherwise, we're going to be losing revenue. And lastly, but very important, is that we guarantee performance. If the system doesn't produce the kilowatt-hours stated year by year in the contract, we make you whole for what you had to pay your utility for more expensive energy. All right, so now that you understand some of the basics of what we talked about, I'm going to move on to the specifics like Nicole asked. For Sycamore High School, we have a 1,274 KW roof that utilizes the fieldhouse roof and the full roof of the high school. And for the middle school, a 776 KW system that also utilizes the whole roof. So now let's talk about savings. If you look at the table on the top, going from left to right, we have both the high school and the middle school with a 25-year term, a flat rate, and a system totaling about 2 megawatts of solar between the two. These systems will produce about 2.5 million KWH a year, which will offset about 73% of the energy usage of the schools. With these projects, we would be able to beat your rates and save $2,000 year one, and over the course of 25 years, an estimated 1.86 million. And just to note, these figures of savings assume a conservative annual utility escalation rate of 2.5%. And if I get on into the specifics of the high school and the middle school, like Nicole said, we walked these sites back in October. And for the high school, we know that this is an executable project now at the current incentive levels and the cost to build. We want to move to execute a contract to lock down the current incentives before they close on June 1st. And what we've talked with Nicole and Mark is that these plans align nicely with the expected re-roof for the high school, which is to happen in the summer of 2023. Now, in turn, for the middle school, this project requires a little bit more work. It is half the size of the high school, and so it has reduced economies of scale. It is a more expensive project on a unit basis. But what Forefront proposes tonight is to execute the contract so that we can begin design and value engineering so that we can set ourselves up for next year's incentive, which might actually have additional features for a system this size that allow the economics we see here to be realized. And again, to reiterate, all this due diligence would be done at Forefront Power's cost. And so let's talk incentives. I've been talking about incentives, but let me give you a little context. So incentives, we know, are free money. And for, in Illinois, they're part of the legislative package that passed this past fall, also known as the Climate and Equitable Jobs Act. What do we need to get these incentives? Three things. We need the design work and executed contracts for the system, interconnection agreements with the utility, in this case, ComEd, and permits from the authorities having jurisdiction. This, all this will allow us to apply into the Adjustable Block Program and actually secure the incentive. And to the right, we actually have put together the timeline required to achieve these prerequisites in time. Assuming that we execute contracts this winter with the district, we will immediately move into the design and diligence phase, oh, excuse me, to submit permits. And then that will allow us to, and then we'll position ourselves, excuse me, to apply to the Adjustable Block Program well before that block closes on June 1st. What happens if we're not able to meet that June 1st deadline? Both the high school and middle school projects would go on the 2023 waitlist. We don't really know what the future incentives will be for next year. So there is some risk to waiting here, especially with the high school. And again, to give you some context on the incentive, right now, half of the incentive that opened on December 14th is now gone. We have 50 megawatts left for the ComEd area until June 1st. So not only are we basically running up against the June 1st deadline, we're going to be competing against other projects that are in current development and will be submitting their Adjustable Block Program applications. And finally, you know, non-ministerial permits will be the longest lead time item for this incentive. Usually, this is a new permit type for a lot of counties and cities in Illinois. And based on our experience with Huntley and Mooseheart and other customers, we know that these items take time. So giving yourselves ample time will allow us to secure this incentive. And then some of the additional value we bring. After we install this system, our amazing marketing team will help coordinate ribbon-cutting events, press releases, and provide video content and photography that you can utilize in your website. We also have our solar monitoring, which would be available in your public monitors, but also accessible online with a customer-friendly portal. And finally, as part of our differentiating offering, we bring solar into the classroom. We believe there is nothing like students seeing the solar system, seeing the monitoring data on screen, but also having all this information integrated into their lesson plan, into their lesson plans. And so for this, we partner with Strategic Energy Innovations. They are the best curriculum provider in the country with customizable options to best fit your district needs. And so by going with Forefront Power, your students and your teachers get access to this platform. All right, so to conclude, we provide a complete solar solution with forefront experience, Mitsui's balance sheet, and Strategic Energy Innovations educational offering. Sycamore can become a sustainability leader by unlocking educational opportunities and savings through solar. And lastly, incentives are closing June 1st, and there's a lot of work to be done to secure them. And then for next steps, I'll open it up to questions and feedback from the folks in the room. And then, of course, our next steps would be to engage in contract negotiation and execution and, if needed, approval from the board. So I will stop there, and I will take questions.
Questions?
I have some. Anna, thank you for that presentation. I appreciate it. Eric Jones here with the Board of Education. Just have some questions. I understand that your savings are based on some assumptions. And Lord knows, we have no idea what the next 25 years are going to be for just about anything. But was wondering if you could talk to maybe historically what the trends in electric prices have been through ComEd around here? I'm more familiar with residential rates, so I don't know what the school district has been experiencing as far as price trends. And the second or related question would be, assuming your assumptions are completely wrong and the price of electricity through ComEd keeps going down for the next 25 years, is there any way the district loses money in this process? That it would have been cheaper to stay with the system we've got?
Sorry, Eric, I think I lost you there.
Sorry.
I think you're back. So you had two parts to the question. One was, can you talk about the historical comment rates?
Correct.
And then the second one, the second part to your question is, is there a possibility that the district could lose money over the next 25 years if ComEd rates were actually to come down?
Correct. Those are my two points.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, no problem, Eric. So to the first part of your question, so actually, ComEd over the last 10 years has, you know, there's fluctuation in the market. But if you take a 10-year average, you'll see that rates have been increasing about 2.5% on a year-over-year basis for ComEd. And so to, you know, that supports, obviously, our conservative estimates. Like, yes, you know, they'll be coming up by 2.5%. In terms of the future, yes, you're right. Nobody can predict the future. I would be rich if I could. But what we're proposing here is hedging at 0% escalation, something that historically has had movement, right? And so whether you have ups and downs, you know exactly what the district is going to be paying for the next 25 years for your solar energy that not, you know, not ComEd and not your alternative retail electric suppliers can assure for that extended period of time. So, you know, can you lose money? I would say unlikely because you will be hedged against at least inflation. So we'll be, you know, we'll be holding flat while everything else, you know, goes up.
Yeah, Eric, I would add to what Ana's saying is, you are absolutely correct that, you know, one of the biggest kind of factors in this analysis is that future assumption. And if we were to use a more aggressive figure, like 3% or 4% or 5% or 6% on that, you know, the numbers would look a lot better, but you wouldn't actually realize those savings. So we always try and use a conservative estimate so that we can kind of over, under-promise and over-deliver. And then you're absolutely right as well that if you think utility rates are going to go down over time, don't do this because you would essentially lose money.
Sure. And, you know, for the, from the, I guess, for the rest of the board, having spent 20 years in the nuclear power industry, I mean, I don't see a lot of development of cost-saving power generation here in Illinois anytime in the near future. In fact, they're talking about probably retiring some nuclear plants here over the next few years, which is our primary source of energy. So I wouldn't expect rates to go down, but just wanted to ask that. And I guess a follow-up question would be, so fast forward 25 years from now, all of this equipment is still owned by your firm, correct? And it's installed all over the school? And, you know, what's, what happens then? Does all that equipment need to be replaced? And you guys start to negotiate a new contract? Or, you know, what happens to that equipment, I guess, after 25 years?
Eric, your mind is in the perfect place. And really, there's three things that can happen at the end of our contract term. The first is we come and remove it at no extra cost to you. You know, our contract is done, and you say, you know, we want you to come and remove these panels. So we come and remove the panels. The second option is that you decide to purchase these panels. So solar has a life of 35 years on average. So at year 25, you can decide to purchase. But really, you can purchase it any year, starting year six, which is when we basically finalize realizing the tax incentives. So you would have an option to purchase the system from year six to year 25. But obviously, at year 25, you have that option. And then lastly, if you want and you like the PPA structure, you could tell us, Ana or whoever is working for Forefront Power at that time, if it's not me, you can say, you know, let's extend the PPA rate, and you can choose to extend that PPA for another five or 10 years. Those are the three options that you have at the end of the contract.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yeah, absolutely.
Just a quick question for you. Steve, did you want to jump, say it a hand in there? Okay. Are we locked into a 25-year? Or is there an option to do a 15-year or 10-year? Does that change? I assume that would change these numbers, but I don't know if the others.
Correct. So you're not locked into 25 years, but what we've done here is basically show the best possible scenario. Because as you get shorter terms, you get higher rates, which can, you know, erode savings and in some cases, show negative savings on year one. So if the district were to look for shorter terms, just know that that is the opportunity cost if you wanted something shorter. Our shortest term that we would be able to do would be 15 years. But, you know, the opportunity cost being that you wouldn't be seeing savings year one.
I just, in looking at this too, I just want to build on. If I read your numbers right, it was a 73% energy bill offset. And you had the annual savings at 1.8 million. You had projected our pre-cost at $316,000 with a 2.5% annual increase. So over 25 years, we would be spending about $11 million on energy. Whereas what you guys are saying is, in a sense, we could be using renewable for 73% of that. If you own the equipment, you're then reselling it back to us based on the rates I'm seeing here in the savings you're passing on to us. You're selling it back to us. We would have been paying $11 million. You're selling it back to us for $7.8 million. We saved the 1.8 million. And if you were able to, you know, keep your cost maintenance down low enough, you could make money on the difference. What, do you know the cost of the equipment? The installation cost and the annual maintenance? Do you have those numbers by chance?
I don't have it off, don't have them off of the top of my head. But I know, I don't have exact numbers, but I, oh, go ahead, Brian.
It's about, like, rough order of magnitude, like about $6 million investment in the district. And then the cost to the district under the power purchase agreement is the dollar per kilowatt-hour cost, just like you're paying from your utility now. And so we've done a pretty, like, robust rate analysis where we've taken your rates from your utility, overlaid on top of them your 15-minute interval consumption data, and then overlaid on top of that the solar production data to kind of spit out, you know, what your bill was with your utility before and what your bill is after. And for that, we use a third-party energy software that uses the latest and greatest rates from your utility. And so with this solar at this price, this is what you can expect your pre- and post-solar utility bills. We have actual year-by-year cash flows. So when we come back, or if we come back, we can certainly show you that in more detail. Like, this is how we're arriving at all these individual numbers.
I just, I worry about a 25-year agreement. So you're saying the minimum you can do is 15-year? And that, does that still pass savings on to the district at that point?
No, because, like, obviously, the same amount, the system costs the same, right? Whether it's a 10- or 15-year or 25-year agreement. So trying to amortize those costs over a shorter time period, as Ana said, raises the dollar per kilowatt-hour rate. And our goal is really to kind of get you a rate that is flat for 20 years. And then in year one is below your grid rate. And so as you can see in the slide, which I think is on the screen, you know, you were saving, you know, basically breaking even in year one. So if we were to show you a 20- or 15-year term, you would be kind of underwater in the first couple of years and paying more for energy, which, of course, is an option that you have if you were to look at it over that same timeframe. But you wouldn't see the kind of year-one savings you would have a higher bill than what you're paying your utility now.
Thank you.
Can everybody hear me? I'm talking loud enough? This might be as much a question for Mark as it is for you, but I see a great number of those panels are roof-mounted. And we just replaced a lot of roofs at the middle school and had a lot to do with the high school. So I'm wondering how they're fastened? If they're not fastened and they're weighted? What's their blow-off ratio from the roof? And what kind of penetrations, if you are going to the roof? And when we talked about what that does, it does not do to roofing warranties?
Right, so what we do is we use a minimally, like, basically a ballasted system on your roof with what we call like a, it's min pen, minimally penetrating the roof. And so there are some areas, the minimum amount possible that are required. And so there are some areas, the minimum amount possible that are required by code to actually penetrate your roof. And where we penetrate them, we'll do the flashing and what we have to do. And then we'll also maintain and we'll contract around this, that we will maintain your roof warranties as a result of this stuff going on your roof. And in addition to that, I'm not sure if you asked about wind speeds, but obviously all this stuff has to go through a permitting process with your local authority having jurisdiction. And that wind speed is tried and true, like this is part of our bread and butter of what we designed to make sure that it accommodates the local wind speed requirements, et cetera.
So how do we maintain our roofs while that, while these panels are up there?
That's kind of the fortunate thing about where you guys sit right now is that you have essentially brand new roofs. So putting roofs, putting solar on roofs is a tough needle to thread essentially. Because a lot of times the roof is 15 years old and needs to be replaced in five years. So you don't want to put solar with a 25 year kind of set it and forget it product on the, on the roof. And so the fact that you guys have essentially brand new roofs, uh, or will have brand new roofs on these sites allows us to really. It, it sets you apart and makes these projects realizable. And so the products will have, um, fire lane spacing on them. They'll have the ability for people to get access to portions of the roof. Or really anywhere on the roof that they would need to get, um, you know, subject to current code. Um, but you know, the great part is that you, you shouldn't need to re-roof during the 25 year life of the, of the system.
Is, is it possible though to maintain? I mean, if there was a, we needed to do some patching or something like that. Will we, would we be able to get underneath the panels to do that?
Yeah, we have experience doing that with numerous public agencies. So yeah, the short answer is yes.
Another question I had was, um, if we're on the waitlist and the project doesn't get approved. Uh, what happens then?
Jim, can you, can you, uh, what do you mean if the project doesn't get approved, but we are on the waitlist? Like doesn't get approved by the incentives, like by the adjustable block program?
The incentives run out and there's not enough so that the project can go forward. Or, uh, there's something that comes, comes out that, uh, they terminate the program or something. And, you know, anything can happen when you're waiting.
Right. So basically you would get into the, if you get waitlisted, you would be in the adjustable block program next year. And so we're, everyone, no one knows quite exactly what that new adjustable block program will be next year. A normally well-designed incentive program for solar kind of steps down over time. So the general thinking is that next year will be slightly less than this year. But you know, your price in the contract with for from power would be set and would be based on these incentives. So if we are unable to capture those incentives, the project would ultimately die, but the district is protected in that you're not. There's no way that we could just increase your price, um, as a result of now needing more money. Because we didn't get the incentives that we wanted. So the district is essentially safe there. Yes, the project may have to get scrapped because we didn't get the free money. That makes you think possible.
Thank you.
And Jim, just to add to what, to what Brian said, um, you know, the adjustable block program is part of that clean air. Uh, Climate and Equitable Jobs Act, there is a long-term timeframe for the adjustable block program. You know, that's how the state of Illinois is going to procure renewable energy credits for the next 10, 20 years. However, like Brian said, um, any, uh, any well-designed, uh, incentive program is going to be stepping down over time. And so getting your incentives now is preferable to waiting and getting them later because your price is going to be impacted. The rate that we offer you is likely going to be higher if we, you know, if we were to wait for the subsequent years of incentives.
Thank you.
Steve Nelson, the, uh, the new roofing material overlay thing that, that we've been talking about, that, that material. I, I seem to recall there was a, a regular maintenance on that that allowed us to, to put down a new layer every so often. How does that work? What, what was the frequency of that and how might this interfere with that, that process to maintain that warranty?
Yeah, I was just talking with Mark about that because that's usually at a 12 to 15 year mark where they need to do a re, a new top coat. Not the whole thing, a new top coat. So that would have to be factored in or coordinated into that. Absolutely.
So I guess that's something we, we just may need to coordinate if the, if that would require a, a large scale maintenance project. That we need to understand what the cost would be to have, have them come out and remove all the panels. We could do that process or if it could go in, you know, around them or whatever that would, that would entail. I guess I just want to know what that agreement is going to look like upfront. Before we find out in 12 years that it's, that it cost us a million bucks to do that. We just lost all the savings we thought we were getting over there.
Yeah, right.
Yeah. And Eric, I will say, uh, oh, excuse me. I don't know if I'm interrupting anybody. It sounds like somebody's talking. Uh, but what I will say is, uh, in our contract, you know, once we go out there and start doing site feasibility analysis again. We do, uh, our due diligence includes roof feasibility reports. You know, we have structural engineers come out there, talk to your architects of record, you know, also Mark. And you know, the rest of his team and determine is, is this roof? And you know, what is it going to be included in this roof for the next 25 years, going to be able to support solar? And if it can't, then you know, you'll have an out to the contract that says, you know. Your roof cannot support solar for this time, you know, and if we can't agree on a shorter term or another rate. Then you know, we walk away and no harm, no foul.
Thank you.
Yep.
Is there anything else? Well, this is a matter that we, uh, scheduled for discussion and, and we'll have to take it under consideration. And I'm sure we'll be back in touch with you.
Perfect. Uh, I will definitely, uh, be in touch with Nicole and thank you folks again for hosting Brian and I tonight.
Well, thank you for, uh, coming to the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian.
Thank you.
Uh, next item then is the, um, Assistant Superintendent for HR Educational Programs Report.
Thanks, Jim. Uh, tonight we have, uh, Tom Rucker, uh, new principal at South Prairie, presenting on, uh, everything going there. So Tom, go ahead and take it away.
All right. Thanks, Nick. Uh, yeah. So if just a little background on me, can you hear, everybody hear me? We're all good? Yep.
Yes.
I'm back at the home, home front, home, instead of South Prairie. Um, this is my first year in the district. Uh, and it's, it's been a great one. If we can click on to the next screen here. Um, here are some, uh, secondary, uh, second grade students, uh, with their how-to books they created in Dr. Clavon's class. Just a little bit, just a little, get to see those, uh, kids smiling eyes. Uh, but our mission statement, working together to make South Prairie the most desirable place for students, staff and families. And I'll tell you, this has been a, it's been a, it's been a quick year, actually. I feel like long days, but it's been, it's been going really well. Uh, we're thankful for so much. First of all, being my first year, Beth Smith, our secretary has been a godsend in just helping me. Get, get to know the staff and get to know the systems in place. And what I need to be doing every day. And she's been helping me every, every step of the way. Our teachers and staff, uh, I'll, I'll be talking about them later, but, uh, they, they've just, there's a family here. I call, every time I address the, the staff, uh, I always say South Prairie family or South Prairie fam. And that's because we work together for each other, for the kids. Uh, and that's very ob, obvious the moment I stepped foot in this building. Uh, our, our para educators, uh, as you'll see, some of them go, or all of them go above and beyond for our kids. And they're just part of that, uh, that family that they've created. And I get to be a part of, uh, at South Prairie, uh, coaches. They've, they've been really helpful and our new MTSS coordinator, uh, they gave a great presentation this morning, I saw. And they just bring a light, uh, to, every time I see them. Uh, and work, work well together with our staff, with each other and have welcomed me in, and I'm really thankful for them. Um, but it's, it's really a family here. Uh, substitutes, holy cow, thank you substitutes. Uh, I, we're a little short on them. I've subbed, subbed a couple of times, a couple dozen times this year. Uh, but, uh, we are really appreciative, appreciative when they get, get in the building. And, uh, they care for our kids the moment they walk in and it's, we're great to have them part of our kids' lives. Custodial staff, uh, Valtricia, Don, Don's here. I just, I just saw him. Uh, they keep our building nice and clean and, uh. It's, it, they're a great team and they work hard, uh, especially with this weather that just came up. They, they were here bright, or Valtricia was here bright and early. Keep, keeping it clean. Uh, and I really appreciate them. Uh, South Prairie PTO. Uh, we, the, again, they're, they're working hard, doing fundraisers still in this kind of during the pandemic. And I really appreciate how much, how much they work behind the scenes. Uh, and getting some, keeping those traditions as much as we can in the midst of a pandemic. To, to give those kids as much normalcy as possible, to fundraise, to advocate for our teachers. And, uh, the way they can be flexible and pivot to help, help support our teachers. Help get kids books they need, get money for those classrooms. And it's been great. Uh, tech staff, TJ Lynn is at our, our building and, uh, he is Johnny on the spot. Actually, he's Johnny before the spot. Uh, I feel like sometimes he is tapped into my head and he, he kind of thinks ahead sometimes. He's, he's, he's prepared for anything and sometimes prepared before it happens. Uh, obviously this situation, uh, we're in, we're currently leaning on our health staff. Uh, tremendously. And we've got, uh, Ashley and Courtney here. Courtney's brand new. Uh, and she's jumped right in, supporting those kids that in need and families that in need. And running out to the parking lot, testing kids, testing teachers, testing, testing families. Uh, uh, whatever we need to do, uh, to support them. And they're, they're ready to go working some overtime, making sure that our kids are safe. And still tending to the boo-boos and, uh, knee scrapes we get at the elementary level, uh, occasionally. Transportation, uh, wow, it's, it's, it's tough. I know we're short on bus drivers and I know the world is short on bus drivers. And, uh, the bus drivers are here, they're, they're doing it. It's, it's a tough job. It's an important job. It's, they're keeping our kids safe and we really appreciate them. And they're, they're flexible. I can call Kathy up anytime and just, sometimes I just call to check in on how things are going. Uh, and they're, they're, they've just been positive every step of the way, even in, in tough times, even when I saw Steve driving. Uh, it's, we're, we're all here to do that. So it's great. Uh, elementary principals, I want to give a shout out to them for sure, uh, because they've helped, helped me get acclimated to South Prairie. Uh, and we really work together to, to not be on an island together. We don't, we don't want to be five separate schools. There's going to have, there's going to be differences, but at the same time, we're going to work together. Uh, to just bounce ideas off each other and stay congruent and just stay together. So we, we can, in, in tough times, we can sh, share. And I appreciate all their support personally as well. Um, our new, uh, early childhood admin, Eve Well, she is, it's also her first year. And I'm not really going to talk much about early childhood because she's going to do her presentation later in the year. Uh, but it's her first year and, and her and I came in together and she's been, uh, my right-hand woman. And I just appreciate her support and her expertise and knowledge. And I think we have a good dynamic together and, and she's very experienced in, and I'm, I'm really looking forward to continuing that relationship we're developing. And she's great for our kids at South Prairie, our, our little Spartans. And, uh, it's, it's just a fantastic relationship we're developing here. Uh, special ed staff, uh, obviously we're getting, we're getting some added SEL needs, social emotional learning needs. And, uh, they're rolling with it. Lynn Riley, uh, I can call her on my cell phone right away if I need something for these kiddos. And, uh, I really appreciate the flexibility. Lunch and recess staff, they are extremely important to the safety of our kids. Uh, today I had to sub a little bit today. We actually got Nicole out there. She was cleaning tables with me. We were rocking the tables. We're getting done because we have some people out. Uh, but it's all hands on deck here, uh, across the district. Uh, then of course Courtney and the Oscar and Oscar junior staff, I appreciate what you do for our kids. And, uh, they're part of this, we, we house Oscar junior here, uh, during the day and they're part of the South Prairie family. So. Thank you. We'll move on here. Uh, there's some, there's some awesome things here with kids going on at South Prairie. You can see we got crossing guard there. Don't worry. I was in the middle of the other crossing guard. I did not take this picture. Uh, but we got some kids that brought some guitars in, some fake snowball fights. Uh, but we're having a lot of fun here in the midst of, uh, the midst of a pandemic, uh, moving on. Now, there are some challenges, of course, uh, sub coverage. Uh, it, it's, it's getting tied up there and, and as we know, and this is not, I don't mean to be a broken record, but some coverage is pretty tight. I've subbed quite a few times and our MTSS coordinator and, uh, some coaches have really stepped up, uh, in times of need. Uh, and I really appreciate them. And it's, they've just added some, some slight hurdles. Uh, quarantines for staff and, and students, uh, just planning for that and, uh, getting those subs. And how much that's affected their education, uh, added, uh, social, social emotional learning needs. Uh, with kids not, not being used to the process of school, especially the young ones. Um, just working together, playing, getting used to playing, solving those problems. We've seen those issues, uh, but we're working out, there's a lot of teachable moments that present themselves every day. Uh, and that's with these challenges come opportunities. Uh, back to quarantines, pacing with quarantine, just how far can we get in our lessons? Uh, when kids are out for three, five, 10 days. Uh, and just getting them caught up as appropriately and as quickly as we can. Um, meeting cancellations, uh, it's hard to meet when I'm seven for PE or seven for another class. But, uh, the teacher's been really flexible about that. And, uh, and the admin staff has been really flexible about just understanding that it's, it's all hands on deck. Um, the last two kind of go together, overall workload for our teachers. Uh, it's, it's, it's more, it's a, it's a lot and, uh, maintaining that positive morale can be tough at times. Um, but I want to say that this, this South Prairie staff, uh, picks each other up and that was obvious from day one. And I'll talk about that a little bit later in the presentation. What is going well, uh, students are back in the building. It's great to see kids. It's great to see them interact. It's great to develop relationships because that's the most important thing is developing those relationships. Uh, and cultivating that learning environment for, for teachers, students and families. Uh, PLC collaborations, elementary school, having that new PLC time, uh, just giving teachers time to talk students. Giving them time to, to talk about individual students or, or curriculum, uh, and utilizing that. For kids, for, for kids growth. Um, this, the new wind time block and day to days. Uh, having a math interventionist and a reading specialist, our math interventionist, Lynell Lynn, uh, has come new to the building, uh, from north. And she has integrated herself quickly, uh, in a calm fashion and earned, earned the trust of the, of the staff very quickly. And her and, uh, her and the staff just work really, really well. Uh, and her and Tracy Minahan, our reading specialist, work really well. Tracy's been here for a little while. And it's obvious she has the trust of the staff and is an expert in the reading field. And our kids are, are making some great strides in that regard. And it's really because of those relationships that they've developed, that they can talk honestly and vulnerably about student growth. Uh, we integrated Eagle of the Month. Uh, we, we're still doing that. We just can't do the assembly like we normally do in the gym. So we actually have done it outside. We did it a little bit virtual this year because we were not going to go out. Or this month, because we were not going to go outside in the five degree weather. I did not want to take kindergartners out in five degrees. It's, it's not for a half an hour, not very fun when they're just sitting there. Uh, lots of discussion about student growth, where they are, meeting kids where they are, where they can be, and how we're going to get them there. Uh, we integrated some positive behavior referrals at South Prairie. Uh, and this is just to reinforce that positive behavior, uh, get them used to the, the systems in place. And, uh, you know, give them some praise and share it with the parents, share it with the teachers. Uh, and reinforce pos, positive behavior. Uh, student engagement, they're in the building. It's, it's a lot easier to engage a student when they're right in front of you. And you can form that relationship. We actually have developed two new student clubs. Uh, chess club, I just thought of need, ki, kids, kids. Chess club, I just thought of need, ki- kids, kids were talking about chess, they're curious about chess. And our librarian Tammy, Ms. Deal, she took it upon herself, hey, let's do a chess club. And her and I are working together, developed this and just because kids wanted to learn and do, get involved in things. They're excited to, to get involved at any level, whether a complete novice or someone who's been playing chess for years. And then Eagles Care, Care Club. This, this is just about, just starting, but the students really brought this idea to me saying, we should get a group together to help the school, clean up the school or clean up trash. Just different things where they can volunteer and help, help those students do good for the betterment of the South Prairie community. And we're excited to create that for them. Here, just some examples of some creative solutions. On the right, we've got our Eagle of the Month ceremony where we, we highlight one student from each class. And, and I had to do it virtually and it was a little bit of a, it was an experiment and it went well. We had some parents in the building that were viewing from the foyer. And they got to see their student get honored by the whole school virtually. And then they took some pictures with their family. It was a great moment. And we had, we have a, a reader lunch in Dr. Clavon's class where this, those students did their reading minutes and earned lunch with Dr. Clavon. But we had to spread out in the gym for safety. And then on the left, we at South Prairie have the best bulletin boards. She didn't trace those at all. I mean, come on, look at that. That, we do not want to see me make a bulletin board. It's not going to be this good, this good. So, and she's, I just saw her working today at your school. Janelle Fleeter, one of our parent professionals, working hard on a new bulletin board. And I told her I wouldn't look until tomorrow. So I'm very excited to see what she's got in store for us. Some more great things. This, this first bullet point is, is big. This staff, many have been here for a while and they have cultivated this family environment where they support each other. We've had some, some personal things go through, just that have nothing to do with education. And when, when chips are down, these, this staff picks each other up. They, they work hard to advocate for each other. And that's what's kept us afloat and it's really, it's, it's been a great thing to watch and I'm proud to be a part of it. We have a social committee that they try and make little events where we, they can, the staff can bond together. Omelet bar, that came out of just nowhere. They're, they're talking about omelets. There was an argument, a funny argument and some jokes around. And all of a sudden we had an omelet bar on Friday. Spuds with buds, birthday buddies. You could see that we celebrate birthdays pretty thoroughly here. Taco bar, I had to get a picture of that. That was delicious. And then just different incentives, the 12 days before break, that was actually Eve's idea. And it was a way to just, to make things, just keep smiles on people's faces, right? And then some more things at the bottom, bringing traditions back. We, we had holiday tea this year, which is a great way to teach, teach young students manners. And enjoy the holiday season. Holiday, our global, global school play day. Oh, we got, we had a lot of fun at South Prairie, playing the whole day, unstructured, safe playtime where students learn how to, how to play together the appropriate way and experiment and grow through learning. And if you see on the left, Tom Hanks came from the Polar Express to visit the kindergarten classes. And that was pretty cool. And I'm a big fan of Tom Hanks. So, but I'm, I digress. Some more great things to see. As a former music teacher, it's great to see band choir and orchestra concerts in person. It's, I, I, I got chills, those, seeing those concerts, just kids playing together, playing music together. Speaking with the specials teachers, having those kids every day in PE, art, music, tech and library. Making, making, making those connections, more adult, positive adult connections for our kids is huge. Theme days, holiday parties. Of course, Battle of the Books down there on the bottom right. I love kids working together, competing, competing in reading. It's great stuff. And then down the bottom, you see that the, that's the Eagle of the Month. Those are all the Eagles of, of, of one month. And we got, you'll see those in this area. Those are yard signs. So if you see that, they earned Eagle of the Month in their class. They'll be in those yards, South Prairie children. And right in the center, we've got two, two kindergarten students on the 100th day celebration, dressed like they're 100 years old. And some of them really got into it. Those are real walkers. It's pretty impressive. It's pretty, pretty adorable. But a lot of, a lot of great things are happening at, at South Prairie and I'm proud to be a part of it. I'll hit the next slide. I'm going to leave you with this last number. So here, this is a song. You might recognize it, formerly of the Ghostbusters, I hope we don't get busted by copyright infringement. But this is Mr. McDonald's and Raleigh Richardson's, their first grade class singing this song. Here's, these are, these are the lyrics. When there's something strange, as you read your book, what you gonna do? Look closely. When the word is tough, read from start from to end. What you gonna do? Look closely. And I'm not going to do it justice. I may be a singer, I may be a musician, but I'd rather you hear it from the source. We are, we may cut a first grade album this year, but if, on the next slide, we've got our two first grade classes singing this song. Error, unable to play video. It sounded great, guys. I promise you. It's amazing. Can we? How can we get this to work? Maybe we can't. I'll have to email to you guys, but it's definitely worth seeing. You guys have any questions for me?
No questions?
I'm ready.
Thank you, Mr. Rucker. You did a fantastic job. Thank your staff for us, for, for all their hard work through the school year.
All right.
Yes, thank you. Thank you very much and thanks for hanging in there with us. I know it's getting late this evening. Thanks. Please express our thanks to all your teachers and, and staff there as well. Hard work that they're doing. So we, we do appreciate it.
I will, I will definitely. Thank you.
All right, the next item is the superintendent's report. Mr. Wilder?
Yeah, sorry about that. We are working out the AV in here, so I apologize for that. Can everybody hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay. So I've got three items to, to talk about tonight. The first one has to do with an ongoing conversation we've had about property tax abatement. This really comes from the, the Calhoun County Economic Development Commission and an amended agreement. So the, the amended agreement was put in the board packet. Paul Borick, if you, you may remember, was at the last board meeting and answered some questions. That amended agreement has answers to the questions in there. So first I just want to pause and, and see if there are any questions about that amended agreement or anything moving forward, any changes that, that we'd still like to discuss with Mr. Borick. If not, then the, the amended resolution would be ready for approval? There's, but if we move on to that, I just want the board to know that there is a, a business in Tom Nighthawk video. It's already submitted a request or consideration for tax abatement that we can discuss next. But Jennifer, if there aren't any questions, I think that amended resolution is ready for approval.
Yes, is there a motion to approve the amended property tax abatement qualifying criteria and definitions resolution as presented?
Make a motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. Any discussion?
I did notice the last page still has a date that I think was in 2020. I think there's a blank to fill in the day of the, or the month and the day, but the year was hard printed. So I'm sure that can be changed easily, but just mentioning it.
I'll make sure that gets changed in the, when it's signed.
Any other discussion? Roll call.
Chris Ren?
Yes.
Shiloh?
No.
Yes. Yes, Shiloh, Davy?
Yes.
DeVito?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Dambek?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. Next item.
With that approval, before, before I move on, I do want to just cover the, the request from Nighthawk Video. They are seeking one of two options on, on tax abatement for a project at a location here in Sycamore. The first one is a one, a year one inclusion option for a five-year tax abatement, 90% abatement in the first year, followed by graduated declining in, in those abatements, 80, 70, 60 and 50%. The other option would be the exclusion option with the, the Economic Development Commission calls the exclusion option. On for a five-year tax abatement that, that starts at zero in year one and then goes to 90% and then works its way down to 50% in subsequent years. So after looking at that and discussing, we would recommend the, the inclusion option. If the board is open to, to that abatement. Either one would be acceptable, but of the two, we would, we would recommend the inclusion option. This one is not specified for action on the agenda tonight, so I would entertain any questions. But if there aren't any questions and we get some direction from the board, then we would prepare, prepare this for voting at the, the next meeting.
I think the recommendations, as you make them, are, are fine. So the inclusion option would be fine with me.
Like, I guess I'm confused because I thought the reason that we had the 0% in year one was because we had to do it that way in order for us to be able to capture the future property tax revenue at its full level from that, that property. So I guess I'm, I, I'd be curious to know what, why the recommendation for the inclusion option is, is preferable.
Say, say that question one more time, Eric. I just want to make sure I understand it.
Well, I, I thought it was the, our understanding when we put that exclusion option into this, into this development zone abatement, that we had to do it that way because otherwise we'd never be able to capture that EAV because of the, the property tax revenue formula. So if we, if we're abating in the first year, are, are we ever able then to fully capture the, the value of that property?
I think that may have to do that with the, this project is not brand new construction. It's, it's in addition to existing, an existing building. So that may not, may not apply. I'd, I'd like to research that just to make sure I've got the, the right answer to that though, prior to, to any movement. So again, this isn't for action this evening. If we'd like, if there are any other questions, I'm, I'm glad to field those, but that's one that I'd like to just make sure I get the, the right answer and bring forth to the board next meeting.
Yeah, I, I think it's, I think it's doable now because there was a change to the funding formula since, since we originally had that option put in there. So I, I, that's, that's a good question, I think, for Nicole.
And I guess if that's the case, then perhaps the agreement that we just voted on should, should have been amended to just remove that whole option so as not to confuse future applicants or to bring up this sort of decision-making process again.
Well, it certainly gives us the opportunity, if we go back to the old funding formula, to use, to use that. So it, it, it didn't seem like it was harmful in there and yet it seemed like an extra option. So I didn't have any problem with that, actually. You know, I, I, I think that's probably something that can be discussed.
Unless there's any harm in having it, I would recommend that it would be the, the agreement alone. And, you know, ultimately the board has the final decision on, on which option and, and if the, and I'm not as familiar with the, the property tax changes. So if that's allowable and.
Well, perhaps we can put this on for the next.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
I was going to say, perhaps we can put this on for the next meeting and do a little background research and maybe Nicole can address us on this. And that'll give us a little bit better understanding and then we can, we can make a direction for you.
That sounds perfect. Before I move on, any other questions on, or anything else to, to consider on that, on Nighthawk's application or the, the agreement?
Think we can move on?
Okay. The next one is policy revisions. These are the second reading of the policy revisions that we discussed at, at the last board meeting. Again, I, I met with the policy committee, Jim and, and Steve. We looked through all those. This was a very lengthy round of press policy updates. So I'm not going to go through those in any detail. Everybody's had a chance to look at those. I would recommend that, that the board approve those on second reading.
Is there a motion to approve the policy revisions as presented?
Still moved. Davy?
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? I think we've discussed them quite a bit over the last couple of meetings. So roll call.
Shiloh?
Yes.
Davy?
Yes.
DeVito?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Ren?
Yes.
Dambek?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you.
So it's the first meeting of the month and try to include a future-focused item in the first meeting of, of each month. So this is a topic that probably merits some conversation and, and just felt like it would be worthwhile to, to talk about elementary school boundaries. Not recommending any changes tonight. It's just a discussion item, but just a little bit of, of review. Districts that have multiple schools at any level, whether that's elementary, middle school or high school, have a responsibility to identify boundaries to determine where students within the school district attend school. So whatever the community, do students come from that are going to attend West or North Grove or where are those boundaries? In Sycamore, that only applies to our elementary schools. We only have one middle school and one high school. So it really only applies to the, the five elementary schools. And elementary school boundaries can be viewed under the Our District tab on the website. So if we go to the next slide, I, I actually took a screenshot of the, the elementary district bound, or elementary school boundaries. Many of you are probably familiar with these, but for anybody else that's going to look at these, the area between North and North Grove, the shading there was really close. The boundary is pretty much 23 and then you can see a little bit past Peace and Plank Road where there's a, a section that goes on to the, the east side of 23 and picks up some of the, the houses over there. But that's, that map is on our website. You can, you can see the district boundaries. If you look at the middle school and high school boundaries, but when you look at elementary, you see the, the, the boundaries for each of those, those five elementary schools as they currently stand. The last time those were reviewed, as far as, as I could tell, we did some digging. The last time those were reviewed, as far as I could tell, we did some digging into files, and it looks like the last time those were reviewed and modified was right around 2008. School boundaries can impact busing, staffing patterns, facility usage, and other factors. It's beneficial for those boundaries to be reviewed and discussed and looked at on an ongoing basis. Just want to make sure that it helps us to use our facilities wisely, appropriately support students, families, and community. Again, one example is busing and how does our transportation system work? How far are students traveling to go from their home to their school? Facility usage, we've talked a lot about that. We talked about that as early as September. Our enrollment and how our facilities are being used and getting to a point, you know, here in 2022 where it's been a little while. So Davey, if you could go to the next slide. Following the chart shows the enrollments at the beginning of the school year. So we'll go to this in just a second, and I believe it also shows some estimated capacity. Now, before we go to the chart, just want to highlight that we've had some discussion about those capacity limits. These are just for the purpose of discussion. You know, those capacities, you know, we need to settle on what exactly, how we're calculating those and what those are. But the next chart just gives you an idea of our enrollment as of sixth day and then capacities and operational capacity. So David, could you go to that next slide, please? Again, this is sixth-day enrollment. So this goes back to September, the beginning of the school year, but it's a consistent number. We've talked about it a couple of times throughout the school year. You can see the sixth-day enrollment for all of our buildings, all of our five elementary, as well as middle school and high school. And what I did in that next column was just break down the percentage of enrollment based on that sixth day. So North Elementary has about seventeen percent of our elementary population in their building. North Grove has about twenty-nine percent. They have a larger building, higher capacity. Southeast is eighteen percent, so on and so forth. Then what I did was took that operational capacity from a chart that we took from the facility audit two years ago from our architects, and I just plugged in that operational capacity just again for point of discussion and for this evening. But you can see how that operational capacity compares to the percentage of enrollment based on that sixth day. So North and I believe South Prairie are pretty much right on that, that operational capacity number. North Grove, their operational capacity is twenty-seven percent, so they're actually a little high. Southeast is a little low. West is a little low. So these are just for discussion, but one of the things that I think would be valuable in the future is to take a closer look at how our enrollment percentages break down. Are our students kind of spread throughout the district in a fashion that's equitable, but also, again, uses our facilities well, helps us to optimize our transportation? When I went back to that, that last conversation in 2008, one of the points or topics of discussion was where students would go to school, how close their houses were to the school, and was their impact on the number of walkers that we had within the school district? So a lot of things that can play into that. This is just for discussion tonight, something to think about. Let me go to the next slide. So it could be beneficial to engage in a study of the elementary school boundaries as early as the fall, you know, next fall, fall of '22. If we did that, you know, one goal could be to present those findings by December of '22 and any recommendations that might come along with those would at least give us the chance to review current boundaries, busing, enrollment, population trends, things of that nature, facility usage and demographics. One thing that I didn't include here that some of you have lived through and know firsthand is that these can be conversations that are, you know, that can be emotional, you know, families and homes tied to certain schools in our community. So if that's a process that we want to engage in, we obviously want to include the community in that as well, get feedback from the community, ensure the progress with the community, too. So this is the future-focused item for tonight, and at this point, I think that's the last slide. I would be open to any questions.
I think that's great, Steve. Definitely, it's just looking at the fairness and equitability of how we've laid out, you know, those elementary schools specifically with population. Obviously, a lot's happened in fourteen years since those were looked at. I guess that probably would have been right around the time of North Grove Elementary, you know, coming into play. But I think it would definitely be helpful, and I think Steve Nelson's probably brought this up before. I know it's been mentioned, would be getting somebody to kind of talk about the demographics of the city and where we think that population growth's going to be. You know, I live up in that north side by North Grove, and obviously, when we moved in there in the mid-2000s, there were a lot of young families starting, you know, that had kids go through that education, that elementary system. I don't know that, you know, they all seem to be getting older, and then so maybe that's going to shift where that next set of elementary-age, you know, student is going to come from. So it'd be nice to have someone from the city or planning commissioner or whatnot just talk about where we see those those trends as far as demographic pockets moving into town and how that might impact how we draw those lines.
Yeah, if I remember correctly, that study, the last time this was discussed, it was right before North Grove was built. So it's been a while, but I agree, you know, involving the city in that conversation where they see growth and how the city has planned out growth or any changes to the community, I think would be a really important point.
You know, just looking at the figures you presented, it looks like we're getting close to capacity at all of our elementary schools. And so I guess the discussion becomes, do we need to be thinking about another elementary school?
I think that's one of the things that could come out of a boundary study is how are our students kind of spread throughout the district? But also, if we're nearing that capacity, it's going to help us to start planning for the future and the potential for another elementary school, yeah. Any other questions for me or discussion items? Before we move on, I just would kind of like to pick the board's brain, our thoughts on engaging in a boundary study in the fall?
I'm in full support of doing something like this, and I hope that the timeline can move as quickly as possible to address some of the capacity issues that I know the schools are facing now.
I would support it as well.
I would, too. Good idea.
I would support it as well.
Yes, I would definitely agree as well. And I don't, it's not like we've seen a change to where, I mean, to Eric's point earlier, the growth is going to continue in the areas where we wouldn't want the growth to continue as it pertains to the current model and the current boundary lines. So addressing it and looking into it right away is probably, even if nothing comes of it, at least we've done our due diligence, and I think that that's important.
Yes, agreed, and I do think that the city's got to be a part of that discussion. We've got to get some feeling for where they see development growing and where they see the city growing and, you know, what population trends perhaps their demographics reflect.
We'll have some working conversation about planning out a boundary study, get in touch with the city. We do have a new city manager, Michael Hall. I had a chance to meet him a couple of weeks ago. So it'll be a good opportunity to involve him in that process. And my experience in doing something like this is that there's a lot of history and information that gets dug up that I think would be beneficial for him, but also just to have that conversation, you know, with the city and the school district. Okay, I think that's it for boundaries, and that's it for the superintendent's report.
Okay. Next item then would be open discussion and future agenda items.
Jim, I'd like, sorry, go ahead.
Go ahead, Eric.
I know it's a hot topic. We're all very aware of the current issues with the confusion over the legal issues surrounding masking, the general trend, at least in a lot of the population, to want to move past this. And I think we're probably overdue for having a board discussion about what our policy is going to be. I know there's no easy way to tackle that, but I do feel like at our next meeting, we need to at least start putting the framework in place to have a discussion around whether we're going to take the legal interpretations at this point, that there is an option to make masking optional, or whether we're going to take as a board a more narrow interpretation of the, you know, the legal outcomes here and say that we're going to stay this way until the EOs have been lifted. I saw there was some news articles coming out just in the last hour suggesting that Pritzker is going to announce an official plan for lifting the mask mandates tomorrow, although it also said that schools would probably be the last and, you know, probably would be well behind all the other mask-lifting policies, which, you know, probably isn't going to sit well with a good portion of the community. So I would just ask that in the next agenda that we set aside some time to talk about that and what our legal options would be and, you know, potentially take a vote on how we're going to move forward as a board.
Yeah, we certainly can do that, Eric. We can put that on the agenda for our next meeting. Maybe there'll be a little more certainty from a legal perspective when we meet in two weeks.
I hope so. Thank you.
Other issues or observations or questions? Future agenda items? Well, since I'm hearing none, is there a motion to go into executive session for the consideration of matters related to the appointment, employment, or dismissal of personnel, negotiations, and imminent litigation?
Motion.
Second, Eric?
Moved and seconded. Roll call.
Davey?
Yes.
DeVito?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Ren?
Yes.
Shiloh?
Yes.
Dambek?
Yes.
All right, we'll go into executive session. That means I think we have to log out of this meeting, but we'll return with our final votes after executive session. but, uh, we'll return with our final votes after executive session.
Good God.
Give your put.
Oh geez.
Is that kind of, they were dumb folks.
My thoughts are true, true and true.
I did.
Need to go in here.
Are we, are we back? Are we ready?
Hold on.
Okay. All right, we're back in open session. Is there a motion to approve the personnel report as presented?
So moved.
Moved and seconded, roll call.
Jones?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Lynn?
Yes.
Helen?
Yes.
Daisy?
Yes.
Pita?
Yes.
Getting a terrible feedback, that's all I'm getting right now.
Motion.
I voted yes, okay.
Gotcha.
Through the feedback. Is there a motion to adjourn?
The move, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned, thank you very much, thanks for hanging in there.
Thanks for hanging in there.
It's almost tomorrow.
See ya.
Thank you.
Last night it was at 7:00 P. M. because I worked till midnight and I thought, well, that'd be fine, I'd be humble. And they would run late and Chuck would go, you just.
Thank you guys.
Was it?
But we didn't start until 7:30, but still, it was like.